Kathy?
Yeah.
You're there, we hear you, okay. Brad, are we okay? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're good now.
Okay, great, thanks Brad. Okay, we're good.
Are we just waiting to get Terry and Charlie in at this point?
We are. I just emailed Terry back. He needed some further information. I have not heard from Charlie yet.
Okay.
I'm gonna give Terry a call right now, just to see what. We are just trying to get Mr. Emmig connected at this time. It'll just be a couple more minutes, hopefully.
I bet you can see the meeting, right?
Okay, I believe everybody is now on.
Okay, if we're set with everybody, let's go ahead and get started then. You wanna open it up?
What's that? Are you able to start, Nate?
I'm ready.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, meeting of the Dover Area School Board. Again, we're meeting with you via Zoom because of what's going on in our world right now. So with that, we will move right into our roll call for the evening. So Mrs. Benka, if you'd like to do the roll call, please.
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Cook, I think your phone is muted.
Miss? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delater?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
I think Mr. Emmig is muted as well.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Rathauser?
I believe he's muted as well.
Mr. Rathauser? Mr. Rathauser, you're gonna have to unmute you on your phone.
Hello?
Okay, you're here?
If you heard me, I guess I am.
Okay, great.
Nate, this is Steve here. Hey, when we called in, the information that we got put us in as attendees and it automatically muted us. So even though our phones are unmuted, we're still muted and we have to do a special thing to unmute it. So that's probably why we're having some issues tonight.
Okay.
I think we have you all unmuted at this point.
I think Terry is still showing as muted. On my screen at least.
He may have muted his phone himself.
Okay, there we go. All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you for the patience again with the technology here. We would ask that if you are joining tonight's meeting that you do mute your devices until it's the appropriate time to speak during the public comment period. That will help to eliminate some feedback that we may have as the evening goes on here. We will have a public comment period soon in tonight's agenda, and at that time, that will be a three-minute period, and we will be calling on the individuals who have signed up to speak during that period. Any board members who wish to speak during tonight's meeting, I would ask that you state your name prior to speaking, and then your question or your comment, so that those attending might not see who is on the screen at that time, know who is actually speaking. So also, as we're doing the votes, please state your name prior to the motions. So with that, we will move into our presentations and celebrations category tonight. We're gonna start with Mrs. Kroom, and then she will lead into Mr. Nelson. She will, Mrs. Kroom will talk about her district health and safety plan, and then Mr. Nelson will talk about the building projects. Stand, so Mrs. Kroom.
Mrs. Aman is going to share her screen. Well, thank you, everybody. So
Excuse me.
With school being three weeks away today, starting three weeks from today, I thought it was very important that we review our school opening information. We reviewed the health and safety plan, and there have been a number of updates from PDE and the Department of Health since the last time we met, and I want to update you on all of that, and we have some data to share with you as well. So a reminder, at this, the DAST health and safety plan has chosen to move forward with a total reopen for all students and staff, but some students or families opt for online blended instruction either Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, or all five days. And again, I'll remind you that that statement is directly from the template that PDE gave us, that, you know, we are totally reopening, but that we do have some students who are opting for online blended instruction. So the first part of the safety plan, and again, it is online for you to see the entire thing, just for cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, and ventilation was one of the areas that we have complete plans for cleaning classrooms, common areas, transportation, playgrounds, a number of times during the day, at the end of the day, and then more deep cleaning weekly. We have in the plan that buildings will close by 6:30 each evening for deep cleaning, and at this time, the plan is limited to Dover Area School District groups only. And the purpose for that is to allow for deep cleaning at night and allowing our staff to do what needs to be done. Social distancing and other safety protocols is another heading that we had to address. All staff, students, visitors are required to wear face coverings. We, in our plan, attempt to limit movement of students as much as possible. This is a strong recommendation from PDE in order to keep students from occupying a number of different desks during the school day. We have full plans for how students will eat breakfast, how will they eat lunch, and when the cafeteria will be used. And I know that all cafeterias will be used during lunch, and right now, we're pretty comfortable that we have enough room to social distance in the cafeterias. There will be no shared classroom materials, so in the primary grades, crayons and pencils and papers will not be shared. All students will have their own materials, and students are to bring their own water bottles. And again, we have purchased reusable water bottles that would be available at all buildings should a student forget it or, you know, just need one. Continuing under social distancing and other safety protocols, at this time, there will be no volunteers, no assemblies, no guest speakers will be allowed in the buildings. There will be no field trips. And again, I want to remind you, we're going to review this health and safety plan every single board meeting. Prior to the health and safety plan, I have a meeting with the pandemic response team, and we discuss the plan and decide if there are any changes, but we will be bringing this up. So if things look like they're getting better, we absolutely will adjust these. Allow for six feet of separation between students as feasible. At this time, we're not exactly sure what that looks like at the middle school and high school. Due to the building projects, we don't have furniture in all the classrooms as of yet. But at the elementary school, it's looking like we're five feet of separation in most of the classrooms. Monitoring student, staff, and health. Students and staff are required to self-assess for symptoms each morning. Staff started that procedure yesterday morning. It is online. They go online and they ask, they're asked questions about whether they have a fever, whether they've been around anyone with COVID, and students have been doing it all summer during band camp and athletics. They've been doing that in the morning as well, and we are expecting parents to do it once students start back. We have planned, the nurses are planning an area for a quarantine room and the procedures that go with that should students or staff become sick during the day, and we are following Department of Health guidance regarding possible COVID-19 cases and illnesses. And I'm gonna share some of that information with you as well tonight. Other considerations for staff and students. Because this is a fluid situation, and what school looks like on the eighth might not be what it looks like two or three weeks later. We might have students come in, we might have students go out. The district is regularly going to analyze current student-teacher attendance, our enrollment, the class sizes, and teacher assignments to deploy staff to areas of need. So if we have areas that have low students, we will probably use those staff in other areas in order to create more social distancing in other classrooms. All right, so tonight I have three recommendations that I am proposing to you, and I'm asking you then during the board, the meeting, the voting meeting, to approve the revised plan. So the first proposal is, and I'm gonna share with this in a minute, with you in a minute. So PDE and the Department of Health have provided us with a tool in which we can look at the COVID cases in York, in the county of York, and determine what kind of opening we should have at that time. So for the first, what I added this to, this to the safety plan, this just came out last week, in determining whether to adjust the reopening plan, so in other words, where we right now, the plan is a full reopening if we choose to go to a hybrid model where we're AB or go fully online. In determining whether to adjust that reopening plan, the district may use a metric system which takes positivity rates into consideration. Decisions will be made based on at least two consecutive weeks' worth of data. The district reserves the right to adjust opening plans at any time due to extenuating circumstances. The district will monitor this data on a weekly basis. Educational decisions will be made on a trend basis of these metrics. It may be necessary to adjust the data metric if additional guidance or clarity is provided. So Brad Perkins and I meet every morning at 10 o'clock, and we review the prior week's coronavirus data from York. We will also be looking at our own data in our buildings and among our staff, and, you know, in case we think that we need to make an adjustment to the opening for all students at that time. And if we would decide that, we would communicate with that to the board with our information, and at our next board meeting, we would act upon that to adjust the safety plan. The second recommendation we're asking is after meeting with transportation a week ago, in our plan, it says transportation will fog disinfectant on the vehicle after each run. After meeting with our transportation company, they said that is not necessary, and it's not a practice that's being done in other districts. Fogging the disinfectant each evening is fine, but additionally, in this plan, after each run, all of the seats, the handlebars, everything is wiped down with sanitizing wipes. It's just the fog that they felt we didn't need to be done twice a day. And then finally, at the high school level, we had in there that locker rooms will not be used during the pandemic. We would like to add that exceptions will be considered on an individual basis. There are one or two phys ed courses at the high school that the teachers feel that it's absolutely a necessity that students change. The high school teachers completely understand that the area needs to be cleaned immediately after the students are in there, and that no other students are to be in there any other time. So I'm asking too if we can amend that as well. So on the agenda, those three things have been adjusted in the plan for your reapproval tonight. All right, so some other information I'd like to share with you at this point is, as of yesterday morning, we have received our student return data from 81% of our students, that which we feel very good about. This week, we are spending, our building secretaries are spending their week contacting all the families we haven't heard from to get the return plan of those students, and our goal is to have 100% of our information by the end of this week and in Skyword. So teachers have this data available to them next Monday on their first-in-service day on the 24th. So they can start planning and know if they have, how many students they have coming every day, if they have students that are fully online, and they, they'll have them in their class, but they're not going to see them, and if there are students that are AB. So right now, the five-day option, as for 81% of our students, 1,832 students have opted to come into our buildings, which is 66.5% of our students. Another 415 or 15% of our students chose a full, chose an AB schedule. And then another 326 chose full online blended, which is 12%. So what we're looking at, if you took that 15% and divided it in two between the A and B, you're looking at approximately 73% of our students will be in our buildings every single day. And then the last category is approximately, or 181 students, approximately 6.5% of our students have chosen our DAST Cyber Academy. That is our own online cyber academy.
Mrs. Kroom, could I ask a question about that chart?
Sure.
How does this break down as far as elementary versus secondary? Do we see consistency across the board, or do we see more?
Yes. So what we have now, just additional information, and principals are, what principals now are doing is taking this information through their building and drilling it down to the teacher, so we know how big our class sizes are. And so we can now really work on our social distancing. We really couldn't do that until we have that. So yeah, it is pretty comparable. So right now, just, just for students that are attending five days a week, Dover Elementary is 69%, Live is 69%, North Salem is 69%, Wygeltstown is 64%, Middle School is 63%, and the high school is 68%.
Okay.
So yeah, it is pretty even.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, Tracy, this is Steve. Question on this data. Where, when was this information gathered? And I'm assuming this is parents that are responding to this data, correct?
Yes. So in order for students to get their schedule, parents had to go online to Skyword and choose their option. They had to fill out their technology forms, they had to update their health forms. They, every year, that's how parents update their health forms and do all of those things. So we added this to that, so that, this opened Friday a week ago. And we really encouraged parents to have it done by this past Friday, but we knew we wouldn't have it all. But we were really pleased with 81%. That's pretty good. So parents, this is their choice. They just chose this. All right, so just also for your information, student bus data, again, 81%. This was also part of what they had to tell us when they did their, when they got their schedule, when they went on to Skyword. when they went on to Skyward to get their schedule. So the first option, parents are able to transport their students. We were very pleased with this because this is going to allow us to really social distance on the bus very well. 29% of the parents said that they are willing to transport their students every day. Another 8% said their students are willing to transport themselves or they walk. So those are our juniors, seniors and our walkers. Parents may be able to transport is 24%. And that left us with 39% on the buses that are absolutely unable to transport themselves. So we were really pretty pleased with this and we really, we know that this is going to really increase social distancing on the bus. We were pleased with this.
Tracy, how will this affect the traffic flow around the buildings? Will we have traffic control issues, backups on roads? How's that going to work?
So each of the elementary principal, I'm sorry, each of all of the principals have reconfigured or redesigned or did whatever they needed to do to figure out new traffic patterns or to make adjustments. I'm trying to think, I can't think of a really good example. I want to say Weiglestown did something where they're going to snake the parents in a different way. So they're not on the roads. Now, I will tell you, Brad is also working, we have a meeting tomorrow with the police, has been working with them to make them aware of some of our issues. And again, until you see it, it's tough. But yes, all of, all of the principals have looked at all of their parent drop offs to see how this works. Just in another additional piece, all the principals at the elementary levels have also worked with all the local daycare centers to figure out the best way because a number of them transport students, how do they come in? And then again, we do have our special education vans. So they have really had to work out a really good transportation drop off at their buildings. So yep, we were on that, we're on that.
Thank you.
Alright, so this was something that came out last week. So this is a tool that PDE gave us to help us to determine which instructional model schools should be in. So on the left is the level of community transmission and it's low, moderate or high. Across the top, it's the incidence rate per 100,000 and/or the PCR positivity rate, which is basically the percent positive of those that are tested. And then at the end is the recommended model is what PD is recommending. So in York County, if you look at our data, we fall under the moderate. And so far, we have two weeks of data. And if you take a look at it, two weeks ago from 7:31 to 8:06, our incidence rate was 48.4 cases per 100,000. Last week, that jumped up to 70.3 per 100,000. So that was a, that was a pretty good jump in one week. If you go to the percent positive, that kind of stayed the same. Two weeks ago, that was a 5.8 and then last week a 5.6. So PDE's recommendation at this time is that we should be in a blended or a full online model. And what I want to share with you about the wording blended is the definition of blended is whatever the district determines is blended. I was on a PD webinar late this afternoon. So PD is not identifying what exactly blended is. So you know, most districts are determining that to be AB model. However, we offer four different options for our parents. So not exactly sure if that's what blended is considered however, or fall online. But I did, what I, what I think is really important with this data to look at is the fact that so far it is going up. And this is something we absolutely have to keep an eye on. Because if this trend continues, we will have to discuss possibly looking at another option. Now, PDE was very clear that this is one piece to look at. They also want us to look at our social distancing patterns in the school. They want us to look at the amount of kids that are in the buildings. They want us to look at all of that. So, and I know the question that comes up all the time, this is by York County. So the question always is, can we get the same data for Dover? And the answer is we can't. Yes, we can get, we can get, we can get data for Dover, but we do not have exact matching data for just Dover. Can we get, what does this data mean? Does this mean a nursing home or something was high? You can get that data, but it doesn't match exactly with what PDE has provided us as a tool. And I think it is important that we use PDE's tool to look at. And then on the next slide, Amy, if you would jump to that, I want to read this statement. So in, when they provided that PDE recommendation, right below it, this, this is the statement. A county's corresponding threshold may change week by week as incidents and percent positivity rates rise and fall. In order to confirm stability of county transmission, when a county's corresponding threshold changes, school entities should wait to see the results from the next seven day reporting period before considering a change to their instructional models. To ensure the most effective transition for students, it may be appropriate for a school to wait even longer up to a full marking period to transition to an instructional model that increases in-person instruction. So I, I think what I want to share with the board, what's really important is that we, Brad and I are going to follow this every week and we will report this out to you every week. We will be discussing this with pandemic committee. We will be discussing this at the administration level. We will be talking about the, the best way, if we do need to adjust and the best way and the timeliness of it for parents. Because what I, what I want to point out is this is not saying secondary should go AB and elementary stay. This is telling you your whole district, this is their recommendation for whole district. So I think it would be very difficult for a parent to be able to adjust their work schedule or get daycare for elementary families in a very, with a very quick turnover. So I, I think something that we have to remember is, and, and another, there is another statement that talks about should there be a spike? If there would be a spike and you need to move fast, that's a different, that's different. But in these particular cases, I just think we need to just be careful and make sure we are really communicating it out well to our families. And we are giving them the time they need to adjust their plans as well. So, and again, we're in this for the long haul. I, I don't see everything going away by the holidays and us going back to normal. So this is something, a process we're going to continue doing all the way through. So I think it's really prudent on us to, you know, really look at the data, look for trends and then make really good decisions. And again, the decision will be at your, you know, of course, at your level and we will bring you back to make that decision in a board meeting.
Tracy, can I? Sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, I was just going to ask on that, the slide before we're at, where we're at right now.
Amy, could you?
What's the difference between the incidence rate and the percent positive? Like what constitutes an incident that, that now is statistically showing up there?
It is a positive COVID test. So those are actually 48.4 cases per 100,000. So those-
A positive test?
Yes, an actual test. Yeah, like someone tested positive. So those are actually like numbers of people. The PCR percent rate is the percent, the percent positive per tested, per people tested. Does that make sense? So they take all the people? Go ahead.
So what, what that would mean that if it went from 48.4 to 70.3, there was an equal percentage of people testing negative that kept the percent, PCR percent positive at the same level, 5.8 to 5.6. Is that, am I understanding that right?
It could be, but you know, I, I think it could be, we could be testing less people. We could be testing more people. It's all the pers, yeah, it's all the percentage, percent positive, percent positive.
Okay, so I would think the PCR percent positive would be kind of more important maybe than the incidence rate? Is that, is that a conclusion that's reasonable?
Well, this, this conclusion is both of them are equal because it's one or the other. Where you look up at the low, you look at low incidents, both of them have to be there to be in the low. Does that make sense? So they're, I think they're equally important.
So Tracy, can I ask a question too? So this is Rachel. So you had said that, you know, according to this model, it talks about blended versus full online and, and kind of PDE leaving the blended definition up to school district. So, so in a sense, I mean, blended could be looked at as you mentioned, just everybody going AB. But blended could also be looked at, if we have all these different options for our students, that is blended. So whether they decide to go full day, the AB or all online, that is as a district, we are blending the opportunities for education. It's kind of how you're interpreting that for us?
You know, like I said, today was the first time I heard that that's how PDE is interpreting, actually not interpreting blended, leaving it up to us. But there is, I know there is another area IU who is interpreting blended as what we are doing. And as a matter of fact, is interpreting what we're doing, not full open, but the second level, which is scaffolding. So we just learned this today and we're going to get more information on it. What I can tell you is the information we get will not be black and white. I can promise you that. So you know, like with everything we're getting, it is pretty much up to the school to determine what it all means. But we're hoping, we are looking, we just learned this, like I said, I just learned this this afternoon at 4:30. And Dr. Maloney just learned the other piece that we might not, where we're saying we're full open, we might not be full open. We might be the second one down, which is scaffolded open. And we've been saying full open, so we want to investigate that more and we just couldn't do it for tonight's meeting. So we learned both of those things this afternoon. So we'll have more information for next month. Alright, so this came out yesterday. So PDE has a new interpretation of the Department of Health face coverings order. So when the face coverings order came out, I think on July 1st, it was, it was an order and it was posted. And following that, excuse me, PDE came out with their guidance regarding that. And their interpretation regarding that, and their interpretation, one of the things in their interpretation was that if students were inside buildings with, and were six feet apart, they did not need to wear a face mask. That was PDE's, how they determined what that all meant. So last week, the American Academy of Pediatrics released an update to their guide and strongly recommending children age two and older should wear face coverings at all times to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19 virus. Prior guidance we released in collaboration with PDE or Pennsylvania Department of Health stated, school, students in schools could remove their face coverings as long as six feet of social distancing could be maintained. Given this recent change from AAP inconsistent with the Secretary of Health's face covering order, DOH is requiring students face coverings at all times while in school, even when six feet of social distancing can be achieved. So this comes directly from our new PDE guidance. Now, PDE has further kind of come out with additional guidance today. Basically, or yes, late yesterday stating that students, I think, can have a 10-minute break with face masks during the day. But again, this just came out, we are, we, I shared this with all the principals just this morning, shared it with teachers this afternoon. And at this time, again, we are still three weeks away from school starting. So my advice to everyone is to just, you know, kind of let this all sink in right now and let's rethink. To be honest with you, we, kids were wearing face masks in class. We, we never said they weren't. So I think we will be able to work within this guidance. So again, we're going to need a little more time to work within this guidance yet. Okay, so new Department of Health recommendation, since we last met, the governor has created the COVID-19 information for travelers. This is on, on his site. If you have traveled or plan to travel to an area where high amounts of COVID-19 cases are, it is recommended that you stay at home for 14 days upon return to Pennsylvania. If you travel to the following states, this is their, their document listed on the DOH website, it is recommended that you quarantine for 14 days upon return. So I will share with you that this first came up right before band camp because band camp was our first activity. And so we, I think we did have a few students and we did employ this. So we are, have determined that if students or staff have traveled to any of these areas listed on the Department of Health website, we are holding them to the 14-day self-quarantine. We, we think that's important. We just, we just are not comfortable with bringing, if someone's traveled to say Florida and they were at Disney, maybe coming back and being in school isn't the best idea right now. And again, because we are instituting our online instruction model, kids can immediately move on into that for those two weeks. So that isn't a problem. And we've, we've already had a couple of questions from parents who are going on vacation right before school starts and we're like, that's okay, just you go on, go on. You're going on to online instruction for those 10 school days and then you'll come in. So, and, and teachers as well, we will hold them to this as well. Okay, so that is the part of the health and safety plan. I didn't know at this point if you wanted me to stop, if you want me to continue into the extracurricular, if you would like to ask any more questions, if you want to discuss any of this at this point.
I think this would be a good sort of breaking point for any board members to raise any questions or thoughts they have related to this. So I'd open up the floor to the board members at this point for any comments or questions they have related to what Tracy has just presented.
Okay, this is Kathy Herman speaking. So ever since we okayed the plan originally, I've been really, really thinking about this and, and being very concerned with the numbers as they are going up. And I know they're going to go up even more. If we could, if we could guarantee that every child that came into school came from a home where, you know, everybody did what they were supposed to do. They followed the distancing, they didn't go out and have great big family reunions. And if we could guarantee that the children will wear masks to school and, and that they did have their temperatures taken every morning. If we could guarantee that those children would keep their masks on. If we could guarantee that they keep that distance within the classroom, which sure, high school, middle school, they, those children are going to be more accountable as far as those things go, but your little ones, they're not gonna, they don't remember to keep a mask up over their nose and not to sneeze on anybody or to keep their six, they don't even know what six feet, they don't know what six inches is, much less six feet. So I just, I have so many concerns about everybody following the rules, everybody trying to stay healthy. And we can't control what goes on outside of school, but we can control what goes on inside of school. So if we went from a five-day plan, which I know parents would be upset about, I realize that. We all have children and relatives who need to go to work every day. But I have to be concerned with what goes on inside. So my suggestion is that we go with the AB plan. That way, and of course, keep the other, the online, for those parents that want to do that and, and the cyber school. But if we go to the AB plan, then the teachers have enough time. First of all, social distancing would be much easier because we have a lot more room within the classroom. I have no idea how we're going to keep children six feet apart within the classroom and with all the children coming back that are want to come back, but-
Okay, Tracy's talking right now.
Anyway, so if we had the children come in for two days a week, in which time the teacher could teach them what, I'm, again, I'm thinking a lot younger at this point. They could, especially your brand new children, your kindergarteners be taught the iPad. That's, well, for a lot of them, it won't be that new because they have them at home. But for what we want them to do on the iPad, the teacher could work with them. That's what we always did at the beginning of school anyway. We spent weeks teaching rules, teaching classroom as far as what the expectations were within the classroom. So we, we spend two days a week for several weeks doing all those things. And then the younger children would be ready to go, whereas the older children already know a lot of the expectation. I just, I just think that we can still maintain some quality education, but the most important thing is keep everybody safe. And I know the children aren't the ones who we need to be number one concerned about as far as getting sick, but they're still carriers. So they're still going to be with other children who may be carrying and take those things home and make people sick. And it just has me very, very concerned as a board member. sick. And it just has me very, very concerned as a board member to be responsible for a five-day in-house program with the way things are heading up now. The numbers are climbing and I just am very concerned about this.
Anybody else?
Yes, this is Dennis DeSho. I have two children in the district. I picked five days a week for them. But with, I've been struggling with this. It's, it's not an easy decision. And I have been really, really thinking about that. With me being on the board, I'm confident that I can say, yep, we're doing everything we can. I get the most up-to-date information. But I don't know, I am really leaning towards the A B schedule as well. I look at it this way, I have two, two children, one in the high school, one in the middle school. So they'll be in there five days a week doing their thing. I also have a wife who teaches at another district. So now my family's getting a double, well, triple whack at possibly getting COVID from another school district or two different buildings. I just think it's, by going off of what the one document said that we're moderate, I'm just leaning myself more towards an A B schedule. I think it's just best that the kids get in there, they get to see their teachers. Is it for five days? No, but I think with the teachers we have, I think they can give us the best education for the students. And my other reasoning is, per the document, I forget what it was, but the major 1,800 students, parents have picked that their students are going five days a week. I would hate to change it two weeks in and only give those parents that definitely need to find accommodations for their students if they're, that they need them to go there full-time. So I would rather do it now than two weeks in if it gets worse again. So I would rather give parents the time to find somebody to, A, watch their kid or whatever they gotta do. But I myself, I'm, I'm with Kathy, I'm definitely leaning more towards the A to B, A B schedule. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Steve.
This is Chuck. Okay, Steve.
Go ahead, Chuck.
All right. I guess, probably like the rest of us, I am struggling with this as well. You know, I, I believe that our students learn best when they're in a classroom in front of a teacher. I definitely don't like the totally online, because again, I just think a lot of our students will struggle, will struggle, excuse me, with, with going totally online. Because I really do think they need that, that the personal interaction. The thing that is concerning me even more now is looking at these updated numbers. And while the positivity rate, I think, is, I mean, we're right there on the cusp of being, you know, at that 5%, but the incidence rate, I think, you know, seeing that, I mean, almost doubled from the first two weeks to the second two weeks. That, that concerns me. I don't have, you know, for, for the A B versus in-person, I think either way that you're going to be in the class the whole time, especially the teachers. And I guess, for me, that's what, that's my concern. You know, we have some older teachers that, and even maybe some of the younger teachers that have some risk factors, that really increases their odds of-
They want me to press starts.
Having some, some really significant issues should they, you know, virus. So I guess my concern is, is a lot of time looking out for the teachers as well. How are we going to ensure that our teachers are as safe as possible going forward at this point? But I guess that's my biggest concern, I guess my biggest question is, you know, we're, we're looking out for the students and that's great and we should be. But sometimes, I, I know we're not, but it just sometimes seems that we're, we're dismissing our staff as well. That, there's, there's my concerns.
And this is Kathy. I'd like to say one more thing too about this. So I've been following every report I can get, my ears on, hands on, every day, just to listen what's happening throughout the county. And even in other counties, I've been reading the sports page, something I never do, but to find some of these teams now, a child has tested positive. So there's been outside forces too telling me that when these kids are getting together, even the older children, they're catching this, they're bringing it in and then they're, they're passing it on. So what's to say that's not going to happen the minute they start into a classroom?
This is, this is Steve. I wanted to weigh in as well, if I could. I may be coming at this a little bit differently than what's been mentioned already. I struggle with this whole thing too, but maybe not for the same reasons. The statistics that you presented, assuming that they're accurate, and, and statistics seem to be changing from week to week and month to month, and depends on who you, who you listen to, whether or not you can even feel that the statistics are accurate. All of these things that we're trying to make decisions on here are based on the premise that COVID-19 is deadly. And while it does have an effect, while it does have the potential, the, it seems like the area that it's most affecting people is people with underlying health issues or the elderly. So from that standpoint, I think there's definitely, like Chuck said, some concern on my part as well for the staff members that, or even, you know, students that have underlying health issues as well. But, you know, if we're following medical expertise, I've been told by my medical doctor that this isn't really something that affects the kids. This is really about the elderly. And so in any virus, you can't, you can't immune the kids to a virus. You can't, you can't put them in a bubble. You can't do that in our society. And, and right now, we're trying to make decisions on the premise that nobody should ever catch this virus. And I don't know if that's a practical plan. I don't know if that's even a practical thought. And the recovery rate from it, if statistics are accurate, is 99.8%, I believe, is the last statistics. And yet, we're talking about shutting school down or not letting kids come to school for the risk that is, is probably less likely to cause long-term effects than getting in, in a car and driving out in public and, you know, on the, on the streets. You know, your risk of being in an accident, you know, likely, I wouldn't, I don't, I'm not a medical doctor, but I wouldn't be surprised it's higher than that. So I don't know how, you know, from the standpoint of health for our staff, an A B schedule makes sense. Because if the kids come two days or if they come five days, they're still going to be in the classroom. They might be able to socially distance better than what they could if, if the classroom had more students in it. But if they're carrying this, they're still going to be carrying this, whether or not they're, there's a larger classroom or a smaller classroom. So I'm having a hard time understanding how the A B schedule is, is a practical schedule if safety, especially for our staff, is the primary reason for concern. It, to me, it's either an all or nothing. You're either back full-time or you are out full-time, one or the other. And I guess, I'm, that's where I'm struggling with the A B schedule. I, I just don't understand how that comes into play. And, and for me, as a board member, as a parent, as a community member, it's very difficult for me to know what to think right now because we're given instructions and mandates that our leaders who roll these instructions and mandates out don't even abide by themselves. And when I see, I'm out in the community and I see kids playing together and I see pools that are full of, of family members and kids you know are not, you know, six feet distancing there, it's hard to wrap my head around, you know, what is the right thing to do here. And, you know, Ms. Herman, I get that, you know, what, what we, with decisions we make for what happens in the school is our, you know, what, what we take responsibility for and we can't police what happens outside. But I would really like to see somebody show us by, you know, leading the way and doing what they're asking others to do, you know, as, you know, leading by example. That would make it a lot more palatable to make decisions instead of do as I say, not as I do. And, you know, you're, you're responsible, you know, us being the board is responsible for the outcome. It's, it's hard to know what is the right thing to do. But I, I agree with Chuck in that, you know, the kids are going to learn a lot better in the classroom. I really struggle with the idea of elementary-age kids, especially the younger kids, wearing masks all day. And I, I think it's going to be very difficult. I don't even know if that's practical, to be honest with you. That, that's kind of my two cents.
And I think, Steve, this is Kathy, and I think that's the whole point. It is going to be very difficult for the little ones to keep those masks on all day. And that's why I am concerned about five days. Doing it five days a week, oh my gosh. Two days are going to be a struggle, but five days, I, I don't know.
Any other board members have comments?
Nate, I, this is Amy. I want to make some comments. And, and I think we're in the situation where no matter what decisions are made, it, it's not going to be easy and it's, it's, we, we don't know. And that's, that's my thing with this. We, and I hate the cliche, we don't know what we don't know, but we don't. When, a few weeks ago, when we had the opportunity to choose whether to send our kids back, I chose, like Dennis actually summed up everything I wanted to say pretty, pretty well. I'm in the exact same boat that he is. I've got a ninth grader this year and a sixth grader this year. Both of them are dying to go back to school. They miss their friends. I picked the five-day option and then saw the spike of cases over the past week and am extremely concerned. I've got a terminally ill family member that I have to think about exposure, potentially exposing them to, you know, and a lot of kids are, I've heard, don't, they carry it and they're not symptomatic. So it scares me. It's scary. I'm scared for, more for my, my family members, my older family members, my parents, my grandparents. And I'm really struggling a lot. And I get, I see Kathy's, I see Merritt and Kathy's points with the A B schedule, where not having as many kids allows teachers to be able to social distance the kids more easily, control, you know, you have less kids, you have less of a chance of them exposing, you know, you know, better class control. I, I, I just, it's tough. And I am, I'm leaning towards the A B schedule. I want to go, I want to go as badly as anybody else to five days. But this is something that can be potentially deadly. And that, to me, I, I just can't make a decision, a potentially deadly decision. And I know it's here. I, I was a friend that I just spoke to the other day out at the park was, was just diagnosed with COVID. So it, we can't avoid it. And that, that's even scarier to me too. So I guess, I don't know, I feel like I'm rambling. I feel like everything's been said. It's, it, it really is a struggle. And I, I don't know, I, I'm leaning towards Kathy on this one. And, and it just, you know, knowing that we're doing everything we can to control what we can and keep the kids as safe as we can makes me feel better. So. Yeah, sorry.
Anybody else? This is Maile. Mr. Ramey, Mr. Rollhouser, any thoughts?
Okay.
This, I'm sorry, this is Rachel. Nothing that hasn't already been said. I mean, the back and forth in my head. I signed my kids up to go five days. I plan on sticking with that. I'm aware of every, you know, everything that everybody else talked about. It's all out there. I get it. I don't think there's an easy answer. We're not going to make everybody happy. It's just not possible. Yeah.
Okay. I just had a couple of comments myself on this. This, this is one of those situations where there is no right answer in this situation. And I really want to preface my remarks by thanking Tracy and the administrative team. I would not want to be in your shoes. I don't like being in our shoes right now. You know, this is a thankless task for anybody. We're going to have people upset with us no matter what decision is made, whether we go five days, whether we go, you know, A B, whether we go all online. It's a difficult decision for everybody at this point. We have a lot to weigh here. Everything's pretty much been said about, you know, the concerns. We also have to weigh the, you know, wishes of our families. We serve a lot of families in this community and it is, you know, important that we hear from them, you know. And two-thirds of our parents have said they want their children in the buildings five days a week. So that also weighs into the decision-making process for us. So it's, it's very difficult and I appreciate all the feedback here. Mrs. Krim, could you really give us an update as to what other districts are doing at this point? So we sort of can see what everybody else is on?
I can. Okay. So do you want specific names or numbers?
If you could just go through, you know, how many are doing A B, how many are going five days, how many are full online, that'd be fine.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine in York County, including us, nine at this point are going five days. Okay. One, two, three. Six are going what they're calling blended. And I do think that is almost all A B. And then two are going full online.
Has any discussion occurred with any of the medical professionals about how this has spread? You know, for instance, if we go with an A B schedule and children are then in daycares when they're not in school, you know, because they have parental coverage, things like that. Is there an opportunity for actual increased spread because they're in different environments rather than containing them into one facility for, you know, five days a week straight?
That, that, none of that information hasn't been shared with us.
Okay.
Nate and Tracy, Steve again. On those districts that you just outlined there, going five days blended A B, full online, do you, do you know, are there any other districts that are offering all three choices? Are they all offering all three choices? Or are we different than, than most?
No, some are, some are offering in-person or cyber. Not a lot of them are offering what we are offering in that our teachers are actually teaching their courses online. Some are. But most of them are, what they're doing is they're either coming in or they've actually have purchased curriculum where they're assigning some of their teachers to teach a curriculum that's not their curriculum. So some of them are doing that. And then, of course, there's always the outside cyber. So almost everyone, where we have the four choices, almost everyone has at least three, if not the four.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Tracy, if you want to continue on with the rest of the presentation?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Tracy, can I ask one more question? So with the A B schedule, if we went with that, is that something that parents decide which days they want to send their kid? Or does a district balance that out? How does that work?
So we've already started on that plan because we, we thought we will need it at some point. No, we would split the alphabet. We've looked at every way to do it.
it. And the only way that makes sense is to split the alphabet into, I think it's, I want, I forget, I think it's A to K would be Monday, Thursday, and then L to Z would be Tuesday, Friday. We discussed a couple of weeks ago, do we like the Monday, Tuesday? And then Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, same group of kids. And then Wednesday, deep clean. And then Thursday, Friday, the second group of kids. And then Saturday, deep clean. And we kind of came to the consensus that we did not like from the academic point of view and the mental health point of view of the kids only coming in on Monday and Tuesday and not coming back till the following Monday. So we thought it was really important that they came the beginning of the week and the end of the week, beginning of the week and the end of the week. So if they had mental health situations or nursing issues and we, we, so we thought, we felt that was more important. So we were, is the deep cleaning? And then we, you know, we talked about is deep cleaning, there's really no such thing as deep cleaning, but just cleaning. So the idea, what would you do different on just Wednesday anyway? So, you know, cleaning is going to happen very well every single night. And we thought if we did the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday would be full online for everybody, for everybody. And, um, we even considered, and again, we're not fully there yet, would we have a C group? Would we consider bringing in a group of maybe our, um, maybe our life sit skills kids would be in the five days. Maybe our emotional support kids would be in the five days. Would there be interest in a teacher maybe at the AP level, having that class come in on a Wednesday, you know, though? So we're kind of looking at all of those options now to see how we would best kind of fit that. And we would, we would kind, we would want to, um, survey some of the teachers for that as well to get that idea, to see what that looks like. But we are now looking at Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, A to K or L, I think it's K. I think it's K. And then L to Z, Tuesday, Friday. However, we would work with parents if that was the choice that didn't work, the other one worked better, we would absolutely work with them.
Tracy, what is the current CDC guidance regarding the opening of schools at a national level?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Nate.
Like the, the Centers for Disease Control, are they saying that schools should be opening? Are they saying that schools should be staying shut? What are they saying at this point on a national standpoint?
Yeah, the school, the CDC kind of lightened up, what, about a month ago and kind of were pushing a little more to send kids back to school. But I'm not sure that was coming. I don't think that was coming from any data. I'm not actually sure where that was coming from. I don't think the CDC is taking a stand on this, quite frankly. I ju, I don't. Um, you know, as I share, and I share with you all of the guidance we get, nothing is black and white. They, you know, like someone I said, said earlier that they believe that the governor is going to close things down. I don't believe that for a second, not for a second. I don't believe we're going to go into a shutdown. I don't believe that. I think this will be our decision to make and it'll be ours to follow the data and to make the decision along with, you know, what's going on in the community. Yeah, but CDC, they, they, they backed off a little bit on it, but I'm not sure it's for the right reasons that they did.
I think they kept saying something to the effect that everybody, every state is different, or every school district is different, or whatever, something to that effect. This is Kathy, by the way.
Yeah.
From, this is Steve. I guess we just go round and round on this, but I'm curious. We haven't heard from you, Tracy, on the positives or the negatives, you know, that you feel, you, you've come up with this plan, you've given people a lot of, a lot of flexibility in making these decisions. And we're trying to narrow that flexibility and, and make it one decision that fits all. And I'm not sure if we're ever going to get there. But, but I was curious if you can share what's your thoughts on the A B schedule, positives and my, and negatives on it? What, what's your concerns about any of these plans?
So first, I, first I want to share with you that when we presented this plan to you in July, it was without a lot of the information we have now. All right. We didn't have this data. Um, we, we didn't, you, you didn't know what was going on anywhere. Honestly, you just didn't. Um, at that time, if you remember, we didn't need masks. Remember, we weren't, the first time we did the plan, we weren't going to have masks and that had to change right before I brought the plan to you. Um, so when we made our original decision, it was based on not having a lot of data. So now that we're here and looking at the A B, I think, I feel, I feel really strongly that going fully online is a mistake right now. I, I just, it's kind of like where we were in the spring. As soon as we shut down, you, we were never going back. And, and, and I look back at that and think, man, if we could have jumped to A B back in the spring, we might not be in this boat we're in right now. But, you know, we knew when we shut down, there was not, what was going to bring us back because data was not making decisions. So I think what the A B does is it does bring kids in the building. I feel it's really important that teachers take the first month of school to create relationships with kids and get to know them. I do not believe that can happen fully online. I'm, I'm very concerned about the little ones, um, being fully online. I don't know how kindergarten learns how to use the iPad in someone's kindergarten class if they're never with that teacher. So what the A B does is it does allow us to, um, social distance more. It allows the teachers to make those relationships with the kids. Absolutely does. So I think those are all the benefits of the A B. Um, again, I think the A B allows the teachers to really thoughtfully provide online instruction because Wednesday will kind of be a no student day. And I think that they can plan really well on those Wednesdays. And I think we can implement very well the A B. I, I absolutely do. Where I get my butt, my butt is constantly, I'm so struck, stuck here, is that so many of our families, and I don't want to say want to send their kids back to school. I believe they need to. I really struggle with that. I, I, and I, and I understand we're not babysitters and that is absolutely not what I, we are. Uh, our teachers, our educators, our teachers, our parents, our teachers, our nurses, our teachers, our doctors, our teachers, our moms, their dads, their mental health providers, their psychologists, their counselors, or all of that. And I am just so concerned that even in the A B, they're not going to fully get that, but they will still get it. But that is probably my biggest concern is that our parents, that I have shared with you, Dad, in the past about our economically disadvantaged numbers and our mental health numbers. I've shared that with you. Um, the reason, again, going the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday is if kids do need help, they can get it less than a week away. So I, I'm torn on this. I, I am very torn on this. I was very clear on this more in July than I am now. Um, I do believe if we open five days, it won't be long until we're A B. I, I really do believe that. But my heart was telling me if we could just get in for a couple of weeks and get the ball rolling. Um, but that can be done with A B as well. And then I think about these families. I think about these families and I'm, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about that. So I know that doesn't help you at all, what I just said to you. Doesn't help you make your decision at all. But I'm concerned about the families. But I, but I completely, the A B makes sense. It absolutely does. And we can accomplish what we need to accomplish. That, thus why I brought this to the table tonight. I thought it was really important that we are so lucky to have three weeks before we start school, unlike other districts who start right now.
Okay. Anybody else?
Now, one thing I do want to remind the board of is we do have another meeting in two days. So just throwing that out to you, we have a meeting on Thursday with our committee night and that. I don't know if that doesn't help, I'm sure, but.
This is a pretty big decision for us to make. And I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to pull the vote on this plan off of tonight's agenda and put it on for Thursday, give everybody some time here to digest the conversation that we've had tonight, do some of their own research, you know, look at their own, you know, data and numbers. And, you know, that might help some individuals here to make the decision that they need to make because it is a pretty consequential decision. So how does the rest of the board feel about that? Any objections to it?
Question. I, I have a question. If we would postpone it till Thursday, and let's say we don't, we vote it no, and that we want the A B, are we able to vote for it then? Or do we have to wait another meeting?
Right. So I'm going to ask Jen if. Nope, you're muted.
Jen, I think you're on mute.
We, we could change the vote at that ti, I mean, if that's the direction the board wanted to go, we could change it at that time with, you, you could make a motion to change it to an A B schedule. We could have both languages and both documents ready to go, um, based on what you wanted to do. It would just be a change in the board meeting, while we're, while we're, you know, in session.
Because we cannot open school without the plan being submitted to P V E. So it has to be that we have to change the plan and then I have to resubmit that to P V E.
Unless there's any objections, I'd suggest that we pull this from tonight and wait and, uh, vote on Thursday and provide everybody with some extra time to think through this because it is a significant decision that we have to make. And it has a lot of impact on a lot of families. So.
I don't have a, this is Rachel. I don't have a problem with moving it to Thursday. My personal dilemma is I have some, um, some other obligations that I'm trying to, uh, work around, but I may not be able to attend Thursday night's meeting. Um, so that would be, you know, conflict for me, um, which I know that that doesn't necessarily have to change everything for the whole board. Um, and I will certainly do my best to, um, make it happen if that's the case, um, if we are moving it.
Yeah. And Nate, this is Amy. Um, I, I think I shared by email to the rest of the board earlier in the week that Thursday, um, we're leaving to go out of state on vacation. I can try to, like, again, like, see if I can, I can take our computer and see if I can log on via Zoom. Um, but I have no objections with moving, moving the meeting.
Mr. Pratt, any issues with that?
I'm sorry, Mr. I forgot.
Are there any issues with us moving this till Thursday from a legal standpoint at all?
No, it's not. If you're willing to table it and move it on to the next one, you just have to properly advertise that you're going to be taking this into account, um, for when you, when you, I know you have it advertised, but I'd probably ask that you give the, re-advertise that this is going to be contemplated by the board on that.
Okay. There's a lot of good information presented tonight, and I know we have over a hundred people watching this Zoom tonight, um, who all have opinions, you know, to share with us and thoughts. And that gives them an opportunity to email us, call us, stop us in the grocery store to share their thoughts with us too and get additional, you know, feedback from the families in the community. So it'd be my preference that we wait until Thursday then. Okay?
All right. So let's continue the presentation and let's talk about athletics, which is equally as easy to discuss. Uh, we can get that up. All right. Troy, I'm going to let you, you take this from there, if that's okay.
Mrs. Kroom, that's fine. I think you need a break. Yeah. So, uh, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, uh, Board of Directors. Just a, a quick timeline, you know, back in June, we developed a health and safety plan, uh, and that was, uh, P I double A's way to allow us to get our sports and extracurriculars started. Uh, just needed board approval. So you did that for us back in June, allowing us to get some things started, uh, in July with some of our summer voluntary summer workouts and conditioning. But as you see here on the, on the slide, uh, we are following the same guidelines, uh, and same resources, agencies, Department of Health, CDC, Governor's, uh, uh, Office, that, um, Mrs. Kroom and our team has been working on for the, the, the school district health and safety plan. So we have the same template and we have the same, uh, buckets of things to identify and address. So as you can see there, we have a cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, and ventilation, uh, category. Some of the things that we're doing is certainly, uh, as, you know, we can social distance and stay outside, allow the natural ventilation occur with outside practices. We're doing that wherever possible. And if the event, uh, you know, is, uh, specific for that, um, when we're scheduling the facilities, we are really trying to be careful about the time in between and allowing for that proper, uh, cleaning and disinfecting. Please. Thank you. Um, we are adhering to the Governor's guidelines, um, of, um, the number of individuals permitted, uh, for our events and our practices and sessions. So, um, we are not having any gatherings, uh, inside, uh, that total more than 25 individuals. That also includes the staff members or coaches that are, that are involved with that as well as the student participants. And then for any outside gathering, uh, we have to adhere to no more than 250 individuals. Um, and at this time, and as, uh, Mrs. Kroom indicated in the safety plan, uh, for, um, evenings, and we're closing down the buildings for the deep cleans, we are also limiting, um, our facilities to just our school district groups and organizations, um, to try to minimize outside influences of any contamination or illnesses. So we're restricting our facilities still. And that has been the case since we closed, uh, restricting it to just our, um, the use by our own, uh, students and organizations. You can see here, we are following, uh, the guidelines, uh, put together from the Department of Health and the Governor's Office. Um, and currently, and the P I double A has come out also endorsing this phrase because the P I double A frankly is following the lead provided by the Governor's Office and the Department of Health. So any sports related and extracurricular activities at our level are limited to students, athletes, coaches, officials, and staff only. So right now, uh, we are operating, have been no spectators. And that, uh, is continuing to be the case and provided in, uh, the guideline, 25-page guideline, uh, that has been produced by the P I double A and provided to us at the end of, um, uh, July, um, is still indicating no spectators or visitors during our events. Right now concession stands are remaining closed. Um, we wanted to have the opportunity to see how things progressed in the community and in, in our cases, um, to decide whether or not there was even the need or the opportunity to have concession stands open. Um, but when it is deemed appropriate, and if we are able to do that, uh, there are guidelines out there, uh, and, and the guidance for the business and restaurant industry, concession stands, if you are permitted to open them, uh, would, would be required to adhere to those. And that's also in the Governor's guidelines and recommendations. We are monitoring student, athletes, and staff health. We do a daily health screening, uh, that all coaches, advisors, and, um, participants take. Um, and it consists of the questions, the health screening questions, uh, put together through the CDC and the Department of Health. Um, and so when we have any situations where there are symptoms, or even if we do have a notification from a family, uh, of a concern or an exposure or even positive test, we respond to that, uh, as quickly and promptly as we can. And we, uh, reach out to the Department of Health, um, that we have a connection with through Mrs. Kroom, who give us guidance on how we proceed with that. Um, and as we indicated, and Mrs. Kroom indicated also, uh, we are following the, uh, the, uh, guidelines that all students will be wearing and are wearing face coverings. Now, the, the Secretary, you know, after that was, had been indicated and gave some additional clarity on our student athletes when wearing face masks. And it, and it is permissible that during physical activity, they are able to take their face masks off or their face coverings. But anytime they're congregating, standing idle, or standing around, uh, you know, in a, in a group or on the sideline, or not engaged in, in any kind of that physical activity, they are required to, to wear their face coverings. They're wearing them, coming to and from their, their vehicles to the practice facilities. Uh, and we are also trying to encourage them to, uh, maintain the social distancing when coming and leaving. So where do we currently stand? So, um, at the end of July, a P I double A released some options for schools to consider because they, all through the month of July, uh, they have been referring any continuation or cessation of sports based on the Governor's recommendations. So by the end of July, the P I double A developed a 25-page document that are return to competition guidelines and, uh, distributed those out to participating school districts. Um, they also provided some options to consider, um, either full return to competition on the dates that had already been established to begin the fall season. But then we're also providing some options to consider to do some delays or some hybrid models, maybe allowing certain low-risk sports to begin on time, but maybe some contact sports to continue later. So that conversation started and many of the local, um, districts, uh, when I say districts, in, in, in the state of Pennsylvania, we have 12 athletics divided into 12 different districts. And then within our districts, and we actually participate in District Three, and within our district, there are several leagues. And we participate in the Y A I A A League, the York Adams, Inter Scholastic Athletic Association. the York Adams Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association. Some other leagues in our district are Mid Penn and Lancaster Lebanon. And so just as the P I double A provided the options to consider for possible delays, the individual leagues started having conversations, following District Three sending out a survey, kind of creating that dialogue, what do you think? What do you, what are your members thinking? The first league to decide to make a delay was Mid Penn, and that was probably around July 31st. They decided to delay the start of the season and then followed up with some delays in when the actual competitions would begin. A few days after that, the Lancaster Lebanon League also delayed and followed a very, very similar calendar as Mid Penn. So then on August, and along the way, our league, the York Adams League, had been already meeting and talking, and we had developed a subcommittee of our member schools to actually look at our own return to competition guidelines. So we were already working on some things, as many other leagues were as well. So then on August 6th, the Y A organization got together, and our members voted to also delay our, the start of our season, very, very close in dates to our neighboring leagues, Mid Penn and Lancaster Lebanon. On August 6th is when we made that decision. That very afternoon is whenever Governor Wolf had made his comment that he was strongly recommending that schools delay the start of sports until January. So then that started the, the storm of conversation and dialogue. And then P I double A on that Friday, the 7th, came out and actually, because they wanted to gather a little bit more information, having conversations with the Governor's Office, they came out and then also delayed statewide the start of the sports season, which allowed some time for them to have some dialogue, but then again, not every school district in the state had already made those delay decisions on their own. It just so happens that our league, York and Adams, had. So York and Adams League decided to stay with the dates that we had decided to delay because they were actually a little bit more conservative than the two, the two-week delay that P I double A had decided. So York and Adams, Mid Penn, Lancaster Lebanon, we were all continuing with the dates and the delays that we currently had decided upon. And so as of today, it's my understanding that Governor Wolf is continuing to stand by his comments that he believes in order to do the best things to mitigate the chance of the spread of the illnesses, he is still recommending to wait until January for schools to start. P I double A, P I double A has had conversations with his staff last Friday through a telephone conversation, and I believe through that, P I double A is still stating that they are still in support of and believe that the school districts, taking all these steps to develop these health and safety plans, that they are feeling confident that they will still continue to support the start of sports in, in the fall. That is at least what is being stated through their public relations individuals through press releases. The P I double A met with legislators today, the Athletic Oversight Committee, so I believe that was another step for P I double A to gain and gather some additional information. And then the P I double A Executive Board is scheduled to meet this Friday, the 21st, to actually vote on whether or not they will continue to allow sports to continue at the districts, or if they make a recommendation to delay.
Well, stay tuned.
Yeah, but it is, yeah, the other, the other piece there, the governor was, is at a point where they're saying, they're either gonna allow, he believes that either the P I double A should make the decision for school districts, or allow the individual school districts to make the decision. So best of luck. So, yes, that's where we are. So everything's coming back to the local level.
So at this point, I think we just, we hold tight to see what P I double A is gonna do.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Steve. Hi, Troy. Just thinking, thinking about, hi there, I was just thinking about the recommendations here. I mean, we, we love our sports. In, in our, in our culture, we love our sports, and I'm, I'm one of those. I love sports too, and our kids need that. Our kids need the extracurriculars. It's, you know, statistics show the value of it. It's definitely great, and I'm a big fan of it. I'm a big supporter of it. But that having been said, thinking about some of the, the things that had been allowed on it and comparing that to the educational process, for example, you know, taking your masks off when you're, you know, doing competitive nature. I mean, those kids are gonna be all over each other in, in athletics. And here we are debating whether or not kids should be within six feet of each other in a classroom. And, and, you know, I, it just, it, it's mind-boggling to me. It's just, it's mind-boggling to me how you wrap your head around it and make sense of it all. You know, and we've seen some, some, uh, some bucking the trend. I don't know what happens if P I double A decides, you know, they're not gonna abide by Governor Wolf's mandates or recommendations. I, I don't know, because it's, it's been all over the map and, you know, I, I wanna see sports. I want, I want the kids to have that opportunity. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, what's gonna happen? What, what's next? About the time it seems like there's a plan in place, the plan gets blown up and changed, and that makes it very difficult for everybody involved to know what to think and how to think. So I don't envy anybody in the position having to make these decisions, including ourselves, and it's tough, it's tough, but, but, yeah, just, you know, take your masks off certain times. Take your mask off to, to march in a, in a, in a, I was gonna say riot, but I didn't mean that. I meant a protest, you know, or go someplace and, and tell everybody they need to wear a mask, but you don't wear one yourself. And that, that comes back to what I said a little bit ago. You know, you lead by example, and you try to be reasonable in some of the things that you're deciding. And, you know, common sense doesn't always seem to be the, the order of the day at times, and it's hard to, hard to know what is right and what's wrong anymore.
So Troy, this is Amy. I have a question. When, if the P I double A approves and allows sports to continue, I know a lot of parents are worried about being able to see games and, you know, the, I realize it's a huge, huge task to manage who we can have in games and who, you know, choosing who gets to see and who doesn't. What are our options? Have there been any discussion, like live streaming? Are there gonna be options for parents? I mean, I've got a ninth grader who's playing soccer for the first time. I'm super excited to see her, although she's probably glad that I won't be there screaming from the sideline. But, you know, I, I would love to, to hear what kind of options are being discussed.
That's a great question. This is Britton. Yes, like I said, at this time, there are no spectators or visitors permitted, and unless the P I double A does make a change to the guidelines that, if they come out with a decision on, on Friday. So all the members, all the member schools are operating with that same, that premise, that we will be consistent with that. We are, and we all are talking about how, what our live streaming options are. Don Papa and Wayne Topper, two of our, our technology director and media individual, we've met with several different organizations and representatives to try to figure out what our options are to provide live streaming. Some of those programs and, and options come with subscriptions that parents have to, to purchase. That's really not our, that's not our favorite. So there are many things that we're looking into, equipment necessary. Some offer equipment for our indoor venues and nothing for our outside venues. So, and some do offer for both, but for a hefty price. So we really have to think about, you know, we are trying our best to, to find the most economical, the most conducive for our families, and we're still in conversations with that. So that was one of, one of the benefits of having the delay is to really try to investigate that. Not to mention, while we're also having our tech department try to really get our schools up and running. So they've done a, a great job in, in managing and bringing in some vendors and really trying to have the conversations. Actually, Mr. Papa just told me this afternoon, he got a quote back from one of the more interesting and promising venues that we thought we were gonna be able to go with, and I'm just afraid that the cost involved with that is just too much. So anyway, we're, Amy, we are really trying to look at that and see what we are having in place, you know. Many of those platforms have to send your video to a destination, and YouTube's one of them that we could use very easily because we already use that with the district. But you have to have the equipment to do that. You have to manpower the personnel then to also run that equipment. So all of those things are factoring into it. But rest assured, rest assured, every other school district is also either, is, is trying to, to put that in place too, because we do find, know the benefits of having that. And we also look at it long-term, because even though we would be doing this live streaming process due to the current circumstances, the benefits would be certainly there. If we would continue to do that, get a process in place, we would continue to do that and make that available even post-COVID, so that, you know, family members who aren't here or not living in the area can, can view it. So we're, we're in, we're in strong conversation about that.
Thank you. Great.
You're welcome.
All right, Ben.
Good evening, everybody. Lot of great discussion this evening. One of the main issues that we've been discussing about is the impact on employees and what's, and some of the issues that we've been dealing with, Mrs. Jacoby and I have been dealing with related to the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And what this is, is this is a law that applies to employers with 500 or less employees. And what it does is it gives paid time off for employees for certain reasons. And I wanna go over those, because you may be seeing some of this going forward on the agenda or people talking to you about it, so you have an understanding of how it impacts you as a school district. First of all, this is a law that expires December 31st of this year. It gives two weeks of sick leave pay, regular pay, to an employee if they're unable to work because the employee is quarantined and/or is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and seeking a medical diagnosis. So in cases where we would have something like that, the employee would be able to have two weeks of regular pay, of sick leave pay to cover for the 14-day quarantine issue. And usually this is quarantined easy, either by order from the national state or, or a local, or in the sense that the healthcare provider is making them quarantine. Now, this two weeks, this is above and beyond what they already get, meaning that if you're familiar, like, let's just use teachers, for example, under the school code, they get 10 sick days every year. They get to accumulate their sick days. So if someone has 50 sick days, this two weeks of pay would be, would be above those 50 days that they already have. So they would still have those 50 days left after taking these first two weeks. Now, it goes on to further state that the employees, they would get two, they would get two weeks of pay at two-thirds their rate of pay if they're unable to work for a bona fide need to care for an individual who is subject to quarantine or care for a child under the 18, under 18 years of age, whose school or childcare provider is closed or unavailable. And this is one that we've been working with a lot, because you have teachers who live in other school districts, or in Dover, for example, where if the school is going to be closed, it's not gonna be able, it's not gonna be available to the, to the student, that they may qualify for this two weeks at two-thirds their rate of pay to stay home and take care of their child. And that's something that we always go through an interactive process with the employee to make sure that we're, we're properly addressing and making sure that the building is actually closed or the childcare is actually closed. They provide letters and everything to that effect. On top of this, whether the individual is taking two weeks of regular pay because they have been diagnosed with COVID, or they're being quarantined, or they're taking care of a child because of the close of school, after that two weeks is up, they will get either one of those, they would get up to 10 weeks of paid, expanded family medical leave at two-thirds their rate for the care of the child due to school closure or daycare is closed. So that, that 10 weeks would be above and beyond those two, the other two weeks that we've been talking about. And again, to qualify for this, they have to be, you know, we're looking at making sure that that, that child, you know, the school is closed or the childcare is closed and it's unavailable to them, and so they get up to 12 weeks or total in that case. And, you know, we're looking at, one of the examples that Mrs. Kroom brought up was the fact that if a, if a, somebody travel, if a teacher travels to one of those states and we're going to quarantine them, they would be eligible for this leave because we're, we as the local government is requiring them to be quarantined. Now, with that, there's a number of issues that we have to deal with, and we're working with the employees to address those issues, because when, you know, it would seem like, oh, I get 12 weeks. Well, in the broad scope of this, 12 weeks is not really a long period of time. You're, you're looking at three months. If you're, someone is being, if, you know, if you have a school being closed down or a daycare being closed, or childcare being closed down, it's probably gonna last more than 12 weeks. So we're working with employees in looking at what might be available to them after the fact, because taking this leave has an impact on the employee. And what does I mean by that? If they take this leave, the time that they're being paid for does not qualify for P S R, which is the retirement system. And so that is, that would be a hit to the employee in the sense that they would have to work additional 12 weeks to get certain levels to vest and/or to be eligible for benefits. The other thing we're working with them is what happens after 12 weeks? Because if someone is ill or someone, you need to be taking care of someone, you know, someone would say, well, I can go on family medical leave. Well, not really, because this extended or expanded family medical leave where they're getting paid for the 10 weeks, that runs concurrent with regular family medical leave, so they wouldn't have that leave available to them once that time is up. And the other thing is, is that once it's used, you don't get it again. So it's not like come January 1st, it starts all over again. It expires, or, or, you know, if you end it, end of October, it starts all over again. It's only a one-time offer to the employee. So we're also talking to employees about looking at their sick leave. Do they qualify for sick leave? Because a lot of times, that's used for either personal illness or for taking care of a family member. We have the option of a medical sabbatical, which you can approve either for one term, two terms of a school year, which is half pay that they receive. And then we also look at uncompensated leave pursuant to the policy of the school district. So there's a lot of issues that we have to work through. And, you know, without getting too far into the weeds on this issue of some of the things that we talk about, but we're trying, you know, going to your, some of your comments about trying to help out the employees, this law is out there to help them. It may not be the most perfect law to help them out, but in this case, it allows them to know that if they do have to take this leave, that their job is secure, that they get health benefits during that time period, as well as they either get full compensated for a couple of weeks, or they're gonna get some compensation as they go forward. So this is something that you may hear about. I just wanted to give you a little update on it so that you have a little bit of knowledge on it and be able to talk about it. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to, to, to address those.
Hey, anybody have any questions?
Ben, I have, Ben, I'm sorry, this is Steve. I do have a question. If they show symptoms of, of COVID-19, are they required to get tested for it? And what happens if it comes back negative, if they are?
Okay, in this case, they, they would, we would require them to be tested because we would want that to happen before they come back. Either that, or they would have to quarantine themselves for the 14 days, and, and that would be our, based on what we've been doing as, as the school, what we're, and as, you know, we look at what the state has, has indicated us what we need to do. We would probably, they would have to be quarantined, but they'd also have to go and get a medical diagnosis to come back. So you're looking at, you know, them having to do those things to be able to come back. They would get the time. However, just remember, they only get two weeks if they are of regular pay, if they're going to be quarantined or they're experiencing COVID-19. So it's not as if this thing can just continue, and they take up two weeks, it happens again, they get another two weeks, it happens again, and another two, no, that's not the way it works. It only, they only get one-time opportunity for this situation.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ben.
All right, you're welcome.
And then finally, I asked Mr. Nelson.
And then finally, I asked Mr. Nelson to join us tonight. I think it's very important that he share with you where we are in the building project, both of the building projects and especially some of the areas that are yet to be finished. So you have all of that information. Mr. Nelson.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So it's to say it's been a busy couple of weeks for me is kind of the understatement, but we're making headway. So at the high school, the student parking lot and exterior lighting is complete and operational. We plan to paint lines next week. Our multi-purpose field that we installed at North Salem for practices is complete, although we can't use it yet. It's it's still still a little till, still a little too new to be on it yet. And the softball and baseball fields are well underway for completion. So we're pretty much on track there. In academic area, which we call Area A, we have the building divided up into six different areas. Most of the classrooms in the academic wing are complete with furniture and the teacher boxes that they were packed up from the rooms. They're all in the rooms right now and the rooms are finished. We have a couple of rooms in Area A that aren't. Life skills will be done by Monday. The classroom there, the library will be done by by the 27th. Admin reception area, which includes the nurses, we are trying to get by 8:31. We're pushing to get the nurse's suite earlier than 8:31. Our main entrance should be completed by 31st also. And then our next big hiccup is Area F. The gym storage, we plan to have by Monday. Athletic directors suite by Monday, phys ed offices by Monday, school store and training suite by Monday, health classrooms by the 28th and student bank, we're a little unsure of yet because of casework. One of our biggest problems with both our projects is availability of material because of COVID. So a lot of this stuff is coming in from other parts of the country and they've been shut down for COVID. So just, you know, the six or eight weeks that they were off has pushed everything way back. So what's not going to be complete at the high school is our, so a little bit. Our gymnasium flooring, we had some issues with scheduling, with getting workers in as well as getting our boilers and stuff started so we could get the humidity level down. So the only way to get humidity down, you actually have to superheat the air at night and then cool down during the day. So we had to get the boilers running, which was another issue. So. But we we were pretty confident that will be put and finished down the week of September 7th and will be completed by September 18th. The only problem with that is the fitness and weight room probably will not be usable during that time due to the odor that's going to be coming off the finish. Gymnasium bleachers, probably not until mid-October. Again, we're struggling with getting deliveries. Stage flooring, we'll start that as soon as we get done. The gym floor, probably on or about the 21st of September. The greenhouse should be up and running by the end of September. We're having issues. So if you go by the the high school right now, you notice that the whole front of the new section, the office section just looks like insulation and there's a metal fascia panels that go on there. And we're we're really having trouble getting them. So we're not sure of a completion date on it yet. But we have sheathing and vapor barrier, which will be up before the start of school. So it should look a little bit better, but it won't be finished. We do have the the fascia panels coming in two shipments. First is coming next week, but it does not include the panels for the front entrance. There's some panels over some doors that we're getting first. VCT or vinyl composite towel in corridor A, which is the corridor, it's right in back of the the office area and the second, first and second floors and where the the library is. Our delivery date for that is 9:14 or 9:15. We're not real sure. But we have some issues there. So it's also the area where our elevator is and you can't have a change in elevation in front of an elevator door for 15 feet on either side of the elevator. So we're going to temporarily install carpet in there just to get us, get our occupancy and get everything up operational. And the rest of the corridor, we're going to skim coat with a cement product. So it's, it'll be very smooth. It won't be dusty or anything like that. It just won't, it won't look bad. It'll just look like concrete. So that'll, that should be done before start of school. And then we have eight rooms that were short on casework, cabinetry, basically. Again, we're we're just struggling to get things in. Our operable partitions in the library or ILC and student project rooms as well as the large group instruction room downstairs, probably not till the end of October. When I say probably 10:30 is where we're looking at the delivery with about a three to four day install. So we should be complete by sometime early November for that. The auditorium, right now, we're looking at a completion date of August 28th to have everything done except the flooring and on the stage. Now, auditorium, they finally started yesterday. So we're looking at probably the 11th of November. We're trying to push as far ahead as we can and get as much done as we can. So these are just tentative dates. So some of these could change and get better. And then once, once we get through all that, we still have punch list items to work on. So we've already started doing punch lists for the high school. And we'll do whatever we can prior to students arriving so that everything should be fine by then. Middle school.
Well, before you leave the high school, so Friday is our occupancy, right?
Friday, we're having our first occupancy inspection.
Cross your fingers for that.
Yep. We we had, we had a fair marshal there today. We have Department of Health coming on Friday to inspect the kitchen. I have labor and industry coming tomorrow to inspect and certify our pressure vessels. So we've got a lot going on. Lot going on. Any questions on the high school before I move on? I'm sorry. Okay, so I at the we've got about 50 classrooms ready for students. And we've got about seven additional rooms that'll be done by the end of this week. So we're going to have about five, maybe six rooms to finish up, which we always plan on having about five or six from from day one. Of the 50 rooms that are done, most of them have the teacher boxes in and the furniture in. So and they've been cleaned. So we should be, we should be in good shape by the time students get back. We've got a lot of work to do in the next three weeks, but we should be in good shape by then. Shops and art rooms will be complete by this weekend. And we have the, we have the boilers in place and they're being connected. We don't have them done yet, but we're working on them. The front new section, we're about 85% complete. Our only hurdle with the with the front section is getting the air conditioning unit. We're having trouble getting it from the factory. It's again, another one of those COVID problems. But we're thinking maybe the second week of September. But I think everything's going to be done in there. We're going to, we put carpet down. The ceilings are already in. Most of the painting is done in there too. So we should be okay with with most of the new front entrance. We're going to start putting curbing and fried sidewalk in next week out front. So that area will be really cleaned up by the time we see the first kids come back. So we got, again, we have punch lists in that section also that we'll be working on. And we've got, we've got a lot of arms in the fire over there. We found out that we they couldn't get their cooling water tanks. So we're struggling to get air conditioning going, but we're, we think we have a plan now. And I think by at least mid next week, we should have air conditioning up and running in the middle school. Any questions on that? Okay.
Dave, I just want to thank you for all of your hard work on this. I know this has been a massive undertaking to build a new building and remodel another one at the same time. So thank you for your leadership on all of this and for, you know, navigating it through a pandemic and dealing with all the construction delays and everything. I think we're in really solid shape actually for what we've been facing the past few months. So I think you've done a great job with it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The other, the other couple of jobs that we that I've done over the summer is we rekeyed live elementary and North Salem elementary. We got a safety grant. Brad did a great job getting a safety grant to get that done. So I worked with an company to get those two buildings. Both, we rekeyed every door in both those buildings. We're still working on some permitting for intersection improvements. We have an intersection improvement we have to do in conjunction with the building project for Mayfield and Route 74 and Canal Road and Intermediate Avenue. So we're still struggling through some permits there, but hopefully that's going to come together soon.
Dave, this is Steve. I was wondering, I haven't been up there in the last couple of weeks since we had our our tour up there. But did did any signage get get done or is that still in the plans or where are we at with that?
Like directional signage?
No, we had talked about having a digital sign that was part of the the plan. I think we were, last we had talked, we just weren't quite sure where they were going to put it, whether it was going to be in front of the high school. I was wondering where that.
Yeah, if you if you go past the high school now, you'll see the you'll see the base for it. It's right in front of the high school. I also have, I also have, and I apologize, I didn't get a chance to share this with Tracy or Jen, but I have a quote to put a digital sign in front of the middle school. We didn't include that as part of the project. We were, we kind of got overlooked. I hate to say it, but it did. So I have a, I have a proposal to put a digital sign. I don't know the exact cost off the top of my head. It's around 20,000, which is pretty, pretty competitive. So I think that's something maybe we should, if you, you know, it's up to the board if you want to look at that. But I do have a quote on that. So you can get that installed same time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that is my presentation.
Thank you, Tracy. Do the board members have any other questions for Tracy or Dave at this point or Ben? Okay, thank you, everybody. This now brings us to our first public comment period. This is a three minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda for comment. I, we did receive two written comments from the public that the board is aware of today. Mr. Perkins, I believe, we have been having individuals sign up to speak for public comment tonight. So I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Perkins at this point to call on those individuals who have asked to speak to the board.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Eifert. First up, we have Mr. Chad Murrin. I'm going to unmute him now. So you should be good, Mr. Murrin, as soon as you unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Allison Murrin, as well. And as a clarification regarding blended learning, from PDE's website, it states blended learning is any model in which the number of students in a school building allow for social distancing of six feet. It was clearly communicated this evening that the plan that Dover Area School District has in place right now does not meet that six foot recommendation. As parents and educators, we have elected full virtual learning for our daughter as it is the only safe learning option at the present time. Tonight, however, we would like to advocate for the students, teachers, staff, parents and families and community members of Dover. This evening, you have been presented guidelines and recommendations from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, including the state's Department of Health and Department of Education. We ask that this information serves the baseline for discussing and redetermining what a safe reopening of schools will look like beginning September 2020. Any other form of reopening contrary to the scientific, medical and professional guidance presented is unacceptable. We also ask that you consider the data, trends and evidence that suggest any in-person learning at this time only increases the likelihood of contracting coronavirus. Thousands of schools have reopened nationally in different states, different regions, universities and colleges to secondary middle school. Each of which presented hundreds of students and staff placed in quarantine and numerous individuals testing positive for the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Meanwhile, both locally in York County and the Dover area, we continue to see an uptick in the incident rate and percent positivity indicating COVID-19 is a prevalent risk in our area. No stakeholder involved in this decision-making will argue that the education of a child is more valuable than life of a human. Understanding this, you will agree that a short-term solution must outweigh a long-term consequence. A marking period, a semester, six months of a student's education is merely a sliver of their 13 year. Time can be made up. What cannot, however, is a health complication from a disease we do not know the effects of worse. Coronavirus is real. It has infected 21.9 million worldwide, killing 776,000. 5.7 million Americans infected, 171,000 deaths. Coronavirus is real. It has infected 125,000 Pennsylvanians, killing 7,500. 2,929 York Countyans infected, 108 deaths. Coronavirus is real. The science is undisputed, data undeniable, and the moral and ethical decision unquestionable. The only safe option for reopening Dover Area School District is full virtual learning. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Murrin.
Mr. Murrin, can I please have your name or your address for record?
Sorry about that. It is 3972 Shepherd Drive.
Dover?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Perkins?
We do have an individual with their hand raised, Mr. Eifert. So I'm going to call on them. The other individual that signed up to speak tonight is not listed anywhere.
So we have. Their name and address for the record then.
Up first, we have Stacy Sense. Go ahead, Stacy, if you want to unmute yourself. Stacy, are you there? Right, on that note, Mr. Eifert, those are all the individuals that we had that had their hand raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our board president's communication section of the agenda tonight. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel matters and administrative matters facing the district at this time. So with that, we do have a couple of other agenda items to cover in this section tonight that require action. The first of which is to entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Benko as Board Secretary effective September 16th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Rachel Nally, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko.
Nate, this is Steve. Sorry, I just had a question. Did we not have this on our agenda for last month?
That was to accept Mrs. Benko's resignation as business manager. That was last month's agenda.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Secretary position. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing that, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Rahauer, are you able to vote?
It looks like Mr. Rahauer is muted.
Mr. Rahauer, you'll need to unmute your phone. Give us one minute, please. Okay, so we have Mr. Raahouser on the phone. He has heard everything that we've been saying. He was just unable to talk to us. So, Mr. Raahouser, the motion was to accept the resignation of Jennifer Benko Board Secretary effective September 16, 2020. How would you vote? Motion is passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer Lepo as Acting Board Secretary effective September 16, 2020 until the new business manager is hired.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser, how would you like to vote? Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. And finally, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Amy Aman as Assistant Board Secretary for the 2020-2021 school year.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser, how would you like to vote? Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll move on to our board meeting minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21, 2020 board meeting.
Go move, Amy Britton. Rachel Mailey, second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser? Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Okay, Mrs. Crim, would you like to walk down through the consent agenda and provide us with some brief updates on anything?
A number of things are additions that we do every year, our yearly contracts, but the ones I want to highlight are 705 Communicable Diseases Regulations and Standing Orders. This is from our position at UPMC. This is a yearly approval that you do, but additionally this year, they did provide an addendum for communicable diseases, especially with COVID this year. Also, I'd like to jump down to the two policies. Excuse me. We have additional requirements for Title IX, and we need to approve Title IX policies. Excuse me. So, what you are approving, what you are approving are PSBA's model policies. That's all I have. Sorry.
Any questions from board members tonight on any of these items? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser, per consent agenda?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our Curriculum and Professional Development category. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve an independent study request for credit during the 2020-2021 school year.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Questions or discussion? I'll be abstaining from this vote because that would apply to my daughter. Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser?
Yes.
Motion passes eight yes, zero no, one abstention.
Thank you. Item 802, we have decided to table that for tonight and move that to Thursday night's agenda, so we'll move on from that. And we'll go to item 803, which is a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Everyday Mathematics Statement of Work.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Sir, second?
Amy Britton, second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. And finally, tonight for that category, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 LIU contract for ELA Instructional Coaching and Consulting.
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Chuck Lauder, second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our Capital Projects portion of the evening. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following high school change orders as per the enclosure. Low bar change order number eight and the amount of $1,395. Low bar change order number 17 and the amount of $6,683. Matchline Mechanical Change Order number three and the amount of $3,0789.25. Also, Matchline and the amount of $10,091.45. Myco Mechanical Change Order number four and the amount of $2,055.83. And then we have four for York Excavating, 12, 13, 14, and 15. The first one at $12,009.29, the second one at $5,001.20, the third one at $10,002.70, and the last one at $5,713. Do we have a motion?
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Mr. Nelson?
Questions or discussion? Mr. Nelson, could you give us a high-level overview of what these were for?
Yes, I'll start with the first one, number eight, which is Low Bar Electrical, was for $1395. We needed to relocate a pole base for a light pole due to making, putting some guard rail in back at the turnaround for the, behind the pool. The next one, number 17, Low Bar General Construction, was for some, we changed the signage on the front of the building. We made it larger and more defined. The next one, number three, for Matchline Mechanical, we had to add some diffusers and paint, painted hard duct is really what it is, for changing ceiling clouds in one of the rooms. Number four, Matchline Mechanical for HVAC, was for $10,091.45. We added an exhaust fan on roof and ran duct to a fume hood that we missed in the CTE department, holding hood. Number four, for Myco, for 2055.83, when they did the draw-up, they missed four receptacles underneath sinks that need power for the faucet, so we put battery packs on them. And first one, number 12, for York Excavating, for $12,929, was to remove asbestos fittings in the old intermediate school as before we tore it down. 13 is an asphalt index adjustment. This is actually from 2019 to now. So whenever we put asphalt down, they had given us a base price based on what the asphalt cost at the time of the bid, and there was an asphalt index adjustment in the bid. So this would be the index adjustment for basically the last year. Number 14 for $10,270, as we were tearing down the intermediate school, we found some 30-inch diameter asbestos pipe below the building slab. We have yet to figure out what it was ever there for. It doesn't show up on any of our drawings or the old drawings, but we think it might have been put in as an air duct and then never used, but that had to be removed. So we are now done all the asbestos removal. And then number 15 for $5,713 is the asphalt index adjustment for July. We'll also see one of these for August, probably moving forward, so. That's all the high school. Any questions on any of those?
Questions for Mr. Nelson? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raahouser?
Yes.
Hey Nate, this is Amy. I couldn't get to my unused button fast enough. Dave, can you give us an update as to where we are with all of the change orders, how we're looking as far as what we had budgeted?
Sure, yeah, we're really good. On the high school, we right now have $216,703 in change orders, and that's almost a $57 million project. So if you do the math on that, and I think I'm right on this, we're at .003%. And on the middle school, and I think if y'all remember, I said we were going to have a lot more change orders on that one than we were on the high school. That's about a little over $7 million project. We have $162,218 in change orders so far at .02%. So, we're, this is, it's honestly, if you're under, if you're under 2% on a project, you're doing extremely well, and we're not even at one yet, so.
Thank you, Dave. Okay.
The middle school, I'll start with.
One second, Dave. Motion carries nine to zero.
And now we'll move on to the middle school. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following middle school change orders as per the enclosures. We have six for ECI Construction, numbers 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, and the amounts of $5,241, $2,286, $12,870, $3,554, $2,818, and $1,344. And we have four for Myco Mechanical LLC, change orders one through four, and the amounts of $1,031.77, $4,707.27, $1,879, and $4,493.08. Do we have a motion?
Rachel Mailey, so moved.
Amy Britton, second.
Mr. Nelson?
Okay, so start with number 19. This was a room that we had severely peeling paint. If you saw it, you wouldn't have believed. You could actually grab a hold of it, peel it right off with your hand. And so what we ended up doing was we put some real thin metal studs over the wall, re-drywalled it, and spackled it, and it looks like a brand-new wall now. So that was in one of the classrooms for $5241. We missed a lintel on, when we opened up a wall, there was, we thought there was one there, and it wasn't, so we had to add a lintel for $2,286. Then we had, on the documents, it showed put new floor in, but it didn't show taking the old floors out in four different classrooms. So this was to take the floors out, and then whenever you take a floor out, you almost always have to do some prep work with leveling. So that included the leveling. It's number 21. And then, number 22, we had some stair nosings that were loose, and they were just tripping hazard. So we decided to epoxy them fast and then install new treads on those stair risers to correct the safety issue. Then 23, instead of building cement block wall, we had an existing steel conflict, and we decided to put metal framing and drywall instead of the cement block. So that was for 2018. Number 24, again, this was a metal stud drywall in an area where we had some problems with a wall, some peeling and degradation. And then moving on to Myco, number one, this was to add some underground rain leader off the building that we encountered when we were digging. And then the number two was, again, it was the same thing, it was underground leader that we didn't know was there when we started to dig. Number three. Number three, MICO, we had to dig up our gas line because we couldn't get a good gas test, so we actually had to dig up our gas line and shut off, we couldn't get down to it.
Okay. Questions? Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Raucher, how would you like to vote? Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Unity Council, Mrs. Mailey.
Unmute myself there, all right. So I have it pulled up on my phone, and hopefully that's not going to die. Okay, so we met on the sixth and had a pretty good turnout. We are going to be getting yard signs. We came up with a logo and a slogan, "We are better when we stand together." I think there'll be great signs when we have them all put together, and we're hoping to get those actually in some yards, or at least at the school buildings prior to the start of school, so that's what we're kind of pushing for. Diversity Day, you know, that was something we were hoping to really pull off here in 2020, obviously with COVID, that's most likely not going to happen. If you can do it in the spring, great, but we're thinking, you know, we're not sure when that's going to happen at this point, but we are still planning for that. We'd like to do some community outreach and some teacher in-service along the lines of diversity and unity, and start talking about how can we bring in some virtual kinds of trainings for teachers and staff. Let's see. There was, I believe the Facebook event already happened. It was through the YWCA, but it was about a topic called "How to Be an Ally." I think there was a lot of interest in going and being a part of that. And then our next meeting is September 3 at 6 o'clock.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Mailey? Thank you. All right, Dover Eagle Foundation, other than encouraging all of you to go buy your Yeti cups at Spangler's Hardware to support the foundation, I know they would greatly appreciate that. Mrs. Krim, did you have anything else for the foundation at this point?
No.
Okay. York Adams Academy, Mr. Emick.
Other than, our meeting will be held next Tuesday night, I have nothing else at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Delauter, York County School of Technology.
Just two quick items, as we discussed this evening with our reopening plan. We did vote on their reopening plan at our last meeting, and they have chosen at this point to do an A/B schedule, which for them was very easy because they've already, because of how their classes are set up with their classroom and tech classes, they're already doing an A/B schedule. So a lot has not changed with that, so that's how they're going to be working, at least to start the school year. And then the other thing is, the building of the gym is progressing. As of the 23rd of July, the roof was about finished, so by this time, I imagine that the roof is finished, and they will start working on the interior of the gym project. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Delauter? Thank you. Mrs. Krim and Mrs. Benko, LIU Special Education.
No, the only thing is that the director is going, likes to meet with the superintendents each year, and we have scheduled that, so he always wants to know what the LIU can do for the districts, and I can share many things, so that's scheduled for next month.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Raucher, Legislative in York Learning Center, are we able to get him on a speakerphone or something in there?
No. Did you hear that? Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Britton, PSBA.
I have nothing to report.
Mrs. Herman, Dover Industrial Development Committee.
The July meeting was canceled, and next meeting is next Wednesday.
Okay. And Mrs. Krim, superintendent's report.
I have nothing more for tonight. I will share some more on Thursday night.
Any other miscellaneous comments or observations from our board members tonight?
Nate, it's Rachel. I just have one more thing I should probably have added to the Unity Council. Last month, I misspoke and made the assumption that we had, that the Unity Council had a page on our district website, and we did not, but that has been remedied since then, and we now do. So it is on there for everybody to check out, and it has a lot of really good information and contact information for people to join.
Thank you, Mrs. Mailey. Anybody else?
Nate, I have, Nate, I have a follow, this is Steve, I have a follow-up question as well. Is Ben still with us?
Yes, I am.
All right. I was thinking back to your discussion earlier about the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. I was just wondering, who's footing that bill? Like, where, is that something that's reimbursable? Is that a federal act, or is that something that's totally coming out of our budget? How's that working?
That is a federal act. It is coming straight out of your budget, because if you were a private company, you'd be getting tax credit for doing this, but this is something that is put upon the district to do, and you do not get the tax credit pursuant to the IRS. So this is something above and beyond that you provide the employees.
No reimbursement at all for it?
Not my understanding, no.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's Chuck. I know, Nate, that you had mentioned sort of, but again, I just want to thank Tracy and the rest of the committee that worked very hard over the last round months to put this reopening plan together. Again, it took a lot of hard work, I know. It wasn't easy, it's still not going to be easy, but again, I just want to thank you all for the hard work and all the time you've put into that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our last public comment period for items on or off of the agenda. This is a two-minute period per comment. So, Mr. Perkins, do we have anybody raising their hands to speak?
Yes, we do. Okay. We actually do, Mr. Eifert. We have Mrs. Katrina Rothrock. So Katrina, I'm going to unmute you, and you should be good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Katrina, state your address.
6836 Pleasant View Drive, Thomasville, PA, 17364.
Okay.
And I just wanted to take just a second to say thank you. My son was on the consent agenda for this evening, and I just can't thank Dover enough for the support years ago of starting our CTE and giving our not-always-college-bound students a way to better theirselves post-secondary while being in high school, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Perkins?
Let me just double-check. I am not seeing anybody.
Okay. With that, we'll go into our future meeting announcements. We do have our committee meetings, which are starting up again this month. Our committee meetings will begin at 6:00 PM this Thursday. They will all be held via Zoom. And then our board planning meeting will be as well on this Thursday at 7:00 PM, and that too will be via Zoom, as our public meetings are at this point. In September, our board meeting will be Tuesday, September 15 at 7:00 PM. Then our committee meetings will be Thursday, September 17 at 6:00, and our board planning meeting that same evening at 7:00.
Nate, excuse me, it says the committee, our meetings for August are the Thursday, the 21st. Isn't that Thursday, the 20th?
That would be the 20th, yes, correct.
Okay.
We'll adjust that. And again, they'll be via Zoom, so you can look for the links for those. Okay. If nobody has anything else for the good of the order tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Amy Britton, second.
Second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.